We have the South Village of Green Hills Council meeting to order for October 22, 2024. They're called roll.
Ms. Hermes, here. Mr. Lee?
Here.
Ms. Hudson?
Here.
Mr. Warner?
Here.
Ms. Walter?
Here.
Mr. Halter?
Here.
Mayor Moore?
Here.
Today we have going to do prayer. Prayer by Maria Walther.
Oh God, our heavenly Father, we have blessed us, you have blessed us with brave men and women who are willing to defend our freedom. May your protection and grace surround them each day. Let your healing hand be upon those who suffer wounds and injuries. May those who have made their ultimate sacrifice rest forever in your holy presence and peace. Come for the families who mourned them and are left to remember the precious lives of their loved ones. Help us to honor and support them. Let us ever be mindful of each sacrifice made on behalf of the American people by our sons, daughters, husbands, wives, mothers, fathers, and friends. Remembering this Veterans Day coming up, we pray in the name of our brother Jesus. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the good God of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The council meeting in minutes of September 24th. There are no corrections or minutes stand approved. Public presentation, we're going to have Denise Dreehouse here, but she's running late. So filling in for her will be Jennifer Wyker. From the Green Hills Library.
I just wanted to let you guys know what was happening over at the library as we continue to have all kinds of fun things. We have started a library visit challenge where we have sheets where if you would like to go visit all 41 of our locations, you may check them off and then come in for a prize. And it's a great way to just see all the different resources that we have all around the county. And it can be like a fun little treasure hunt kind of thing as well. So if you're interested, stop by any library and we can grab you one of the sheets and you can get started. We also have a survey going on right now, just for a couple of weeks on hours preferences and how people use the library. So if you have any interest, you're welcome to stop in and grab the survey. And it's like a three-question, multiple-choice kind of thing to let us know how we can best serve our communities. So we're grateful for any feedback that we get from that. We also have something really fun coming up on November 16th, which is Books by the Banks, which is actually the local book festival that we've had for 11 or 12 years at this point. And it's mostly always been at the convention center, but of course, since that's under renovation right now, this year it will be held at our brand-new, recently renovated main library. And that's going to be on November 16th, Saturday, from 10:00 a.m. until 4:00 p.m. And it's a completely free event. There will be author discussions, panels, chances to meet over 100 authors, a kid's corner, a teen area, all kinds of fun things. So if anybody is interested, there is more information on their website, www/booksbythebanks.com. We're also going to have all kinds of fun programs coming up. I'm just going to give you a quick heads up that in December, we are where the wild things are. We're going to have dino buddies come and they're going to bring a lot of reptiles. And that will be on Saturday, December 7th at 2:00 p.m. And the zoo is going to bring a penguin for us on Saturday, December 21st at 2:00 p.m. So if you have, I'm an animal lover, but if you have people at home where you're an animal lover, please stop in. It'll be a great time. Those are for all ages, so everybody is welcome to those. We're also continuing our regular programs at the branch, including storytimes on Monday at 10:30 a.m. We do have a hands-on chemistry demonstration tomorrow, October 23rd at 6:30 p.m. for all ages for National Chemistry Week. So come and see all of the fun things that chemistry can do for us and some really great hands-on demonstration stuff. We are also going to have J.T. Townsend return. He did the Patty Rebels discussion last year, and he is coming back on Wednesday, October 30th at 6:30 p.m. to discuss the Bricka family murders, which is another cold case kind of from over on the west side in Delhi, but it should be a very interesting discussion. So any and all who are interested in the true crime, come on down. Teens are also welcome to come and decorate a mini haunted house on Thursday, October 24th, this Thursday at 4:00 p.m. And just so that I make sure I have enough of them, it is sign up. But if you call us or stop in, we'll be able to help you with that. In November, we're going to have an international candy taste test for teens on Monday, November 4th at 4:00 p.m. We're going to have a turkey treat for kids on Tuesday, November 12th at 4:30. And that involves Oreos and candy corns and candy eyes and not actual turkey, in case anyone wondered about that. We're also going to have a presentation from UC Classics on Alexander the Great and how he continues to have such a huge impact on even today. We all know who Alexander the Great is. But if you want more information, one of the doctoral candidates from UC Classics Department will come and do a presentation on Tuesday, November 19th at 6:30 p.m. And then, of course, we are closed on Thursday, November 28th for the holiday, but we are open our normal hours all the other days of that week. So if you need us, come on by. And if you need something on Thursday, our digital resources are available 24/7. Thank you so much.
I have a couple of questions.
Yes, please.
When is the Books by the Banks event?
That is on Saturday, November 16th.
November 16th. And then the reptiles are December 7th and the penguin, December 21st?
Yep.
What time?
2:00 p.m.
2:00 p.m. Thank you.
They're both Saturdays. So hopefully, as many people as possible can stop.
Jennifer, thank you for everything that you do.
Well, thank you.
Providing not only education to the children, but also a safe haven for them to do things and to let out some of communications with you and other adults there and listen and learn to behave in a public setting and all that. You do all of that so seamlessly.
Well, thank you.
And I really appreciate you.
Thank you. All of our branches are a safe haven and we want it to be open for minds of all kinds. So we are grateful that we have that opportunity. Other questions?
All right. Thanks. All right. Chief. Chief Tony Space.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have just a few statistics to share and then some notes. So in the month of September, we had 35 EMS runs and 35 fire runs for a total of 70. That was 23 more than the previous year. 12 of those runs in September were on the 27th during the storms. So we had two units and as many as eight volunteers out throughout the storm assisting with trees down and notifying Duke for wires and all of those kind of things. So so far this month, we've had 20 EMS runs and 13 fire runs for a total of 33. Of course, the month's not over yet. So even with the month's not over, we're tracking about, looks like about 25 runs ahead of last year. I brought a piece of equipment to show you tonight. So our new rescue tools are in. And I've reported a couple of times on this, we received a Bureau of Workers' Compensation grant. And we bought $60,000 worth of tools and our share was $20,000 of that. This is a hydraulic spreader. Those of you that have been around a while might remember the Jaws of Life. That's what we used to call it. This is a Genesis tool, bought from How Rescue in Dayton, Ohio, we've been dealing with them for a number of years. The cool thing about this, and this piece of equipment right here was $15,000 just alone. The cool piece, the cool thing about that is this thing runs off of a lithium ion battery. It's like your power drill is a little bigger, but you're drilling it on, it's hot on there. It's completely self-contained, so there's no fluid leakage, there's no fluid to change. And it sits on a truck just like this. And when we want to use it, we just hit the button. It's got little LED lights on it because nobody crashes at 3 o'clock in the afternoon. It's always in the middle of the night. So the technology has come a long, long way since the 70s. And we were very, very fortunate to be able to have this piece of equipment. So we have, this is a spreader. We also have cutter. We have a tool called a ram, which extends from about 18 inches to 36 inches, so we can spread things apart and access vehicles and get victims out. And then we also have a tool called a combi-tool. Looks very similar to this, but it's a combination spreader and cutter. And so that gives us some additional capabilities while we're on the scene. You can have more than one firefighter spreading and cutting at the same time. So the way cars are built today, you know, we can take the whole side of an automobile off in a matter of minutes versus to what we used to have to do. So just thought I would bring that. We're pretty proud of it. It's going to be put on the truck here within the next week or so. We've already got our training. I just wanted to share that with everybody. So, you know, obviously, the ability for us to pay for this full is a challenge. So we're thankful that we were able to get that grant through Bureau of Workers' Compensation. So Mayor Moore, we can do a demonstration on your car tonight. After the meeting, if any of you would like to pick this up and try it, we're more than likely to do it. I'll set it at the office.
Yeah. So will you be bronzing the old Jaws of Life for a museum piece?
Yeah. So we, when we got the very first Jaws of Life in Green Hills, it was in the late 70s. And the Kiwanis bought it for $5,000 and it was to be shared between Green Hills and Forest Park. And at the time, Forest Park did not have a rescue truck. So we got to keep it and then we responded, of course, regionally in the area with the Hurst Tool. And I remember specifically, a really bad wreck. It went in Kemper where someone had crashed into the old Promenade Shopping Center sign. And we were, you know, this is many, many years ago, and utilized that tool. So just wanted to bring that to everyone's attention. Hydrant servicing has been completed, so we're happy to report that. There were very few issues this year, which was good. If a resident happens to see a hydrant leaking in front of their house, just give us a call. Call the village, call the fire department, you know, instant messages on Facebook, whatever, and we'll get somebody out there to check it. But we're blessed with very, very good water supply in Green Hills and all the hydrants are in good shape and ready for the winter. Little bit of bad news, we did get rejected for the Assistance to Firefighters grant. That's the federal grant that was implemented after 9/11. We, in the last 23 years, we've received that grant three times, most recently in 2006. So it's been many, many orders. This year, we asked for new portable radios to replace our current 800 megahertz radios, which are going to be going, they're going to be basically ghosted here. We're trying to hold them off as long as we can, but at some point, those radios will be turned off and they'll be rendered useless. So we're going to need to come up with a new plan to replace those radios. Just for those of you keeping score at home, those are $6,000 apiece. We currently own 12 of them and we could really use probably 12 more. So there's some fun napkin math for you. We will be at Harvest Fest on Saturday, so we're looking forward to seeing everybody there on Saturday at that event. October, as you know, is fire prevention month. And Lieutenant Sheets and all the crews were in the schools over the last couple of weeks and the police were involved in several of those, so thank you very much for that. We're out there spreading the fire safety gospel to all the youngsters that go to school here in town. So it's always a lot of fun and our team really does a really a nice job with that. Along those lines, just a reminder that clocks will be set back Saturday, November 2nd. Fall behind, fall back an hour. And we always remind everyone to either replace the batteries in your smoke alarms at minimum. And if your smoke alarm is seven to 10 years old, we recommend replacing those. We will be Thursday, next Thursday, the 31st, trick or treat is six to eight. I'm sure somebody will be recording that. But from the fire department standpoint, we will be out there once again with our apparatus throughout the village, you know, handing out candy, but also keeping an eye on things and making sure everybody's being safe. And more eyes is a lot better, right? You may have noticed last week, we got the opportunity to do some fire training over at the Beechwoods Elementary School, formerly known as North Campus, formerly known as whatever. But for me, I always know it as Beechwoods. We were able to have access to that building through the school board and we were able to do some training over there. We probably saw, if you noticed, that Forest Park was there, Glendale, Springdale, and of course, Green Hills. And we were over there three days last week doing some training. We weren't burning anything, but we were, got to practice hose stretches, forcible entry, search techniques in large buildings. And we don't get acquired structures that often, so when we do, we like to utilize that. And just a shout out to the school district for allowing us the opportunity to do that. So they are, we are now out of the building. I understand that yesterday, they started the abatement process of the asbestos. So that building will be sealed off until they take it down. Let's see here. Just on a final note, just would remind everybody that Election Day is two weeks from today. Pretty important to us, we have issue 16 with the Green Hills Fire EMS levy. Critically important levy for us, allowing us the opportunity at what we feel is an affordable price to increase our response capabilities, improve response times, along with providing ALS, advanced life support when we have paramedics on duty. And of course, the improved response times would be a great benefit to the citizens of the city or the village. And if anybody still has questions, please reach out. There's a couple of videos out there. Councilman Halter and I got the opportunity to be on Waycross a couple of weeks ago. So I've had a few residents reach out with some really, really good questions and been able to address those. So please vote yes on issue 16 next Tuesday. And we still have a few signs left, so if anybody would still like to have a sign, give us a call. Again, private messages on Facebook or whatever and we'll get a sign to you. I've got one to deliver tonight. Gotcha. With that, any questions or comments for me?
Chief, I would like to first of all, thank the whole department and especially Lieutenant Sheets for doing the training for us here on council on our work session. There were a lot of reminders and changes and we were put to course of the new things that we need to be aware of. Second, would like to tell you that I still have people that call me in order to get a sign. And the last one, I sent you the address for that.
Put it out there last night.
And yes, and this gentleman says, you have no idea. I have three boys and all three boys were victims of choking at some point in time and the fire department had been there and been able to dislodge the item from their throats. So you have a tremendous amount of support within this village.
Thank you.
And I really appreciate everything that you do for all of us.
My pleasure. Anything else? Thank you very much.
Wait, 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 I have something.
Chief?
I want to acknowledge.
I'm sorry.
No problem. I thought somebody else would mention it, so I'm going to acknowledge that you cleaned the monument and thank you. It looks so much better. Power wash, I guess that is.
I did, I pressure washed.
Yeah, pressure washer.
Thank you.
Yeah, turned out really good.
It did.
I was glad to do it. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Yes, thanks, Tony. Okay. Now, next, Denise Dreehouse, Hamilton County Commissioner. Did you come bringing money, I hope?
Oh, of course. I'm going to hit on that. I'm sorry, I played, I came from downtown. It was, it was a thing. So thank you for having me, giving me the opportunity to give an update on the county. I'm handing out my menus of opportunity.
Thank you.
This is a menu that promotes some of the partnership opportunities for all 49 jurisdictions in the county.
Partner.
I think I gave you two. Thank you.
Thank you.
With Hamilton County. And it has changed since the last time I was here doing my visits. So I'm out visiting all 49 jurisdictions in the county. There are 49 in Hamilton County. And back in 17, when I was first elected to the county commission, I came around to introduce myself, just to put a face with the name and introduce myself as a partner to all the jurisdictions throughout Hamilton County. You can imagine some of the looks I got. They're like, what, who, what? You know? I'm like, well, I'm just here in the spirit of partnership because I really do want to work with all the jurisdictions. And so I started doing another round of 49 and 49 about a year ago. It's taken a little bit longer this time because I've kind of taken my time at it. But it's been really fun to see everybody, a lot of folks have changed since I was here seven years ago. But I'm here in the same spirit of partnership and the menu has changed. And so it, as you can see, I've provided some opportunities to partner and contact information for the individuals that you might contact if you see something that piques your interest. I especially want to draw attention to the economic development part of the menu. These grants, some of them are new since last time. In fact, I think they're all new since last time. So we've got a revitalization grant that is meant to spur economic development and catalyze a project that you might have in your village that, you know, has been languishing and needs some gap funding. That's what that's meant to do. The Small Event Grant is about a $15,000 grant or so, if you have any events that you would like to expand or further promote. That's what this is meant to do, to build economic development, but also build community. Many, many communities have Halloween events or Fourth of July events or whatever. So that's what that is meant to do. These are all competitive grants, by the way. And then the facade grant is for any businesses and business districts that need a little bit of sprucing up. That's what the facade grant is meant to do. So here in your village in Green Hills, you have taken advantage of a number of grants that the county has to offer, I'm glad to report. And I don't know who amongst you or behind me writes the grants, but you have done a pretty nice job of it. And so I just want to compliment you because partnership probably works, you know, we can have the funds available. It only works when you all apply. And so you have gotten residential recycling incentive program grants for three years in a row. And then you've gotten some homeowner repair program grants or CDBG money. So this is federal money that flows through us down into the community. And so you've got some dollars in '23 and '24. So the total is about $103,000 to the village over the last few years in partnership with the county. So thank you for the partnership. By way of an update as to how things are going, I do want to say that we've got a structurally balanced budget. I could not have said that. Seven years ago, when I was here, I could not have said that five years ago, but we're in a good space right now at the county. We're able to pay people competitive wages. At the time, when I arrived, we were losing people to Butler County and Warren County and Montgomery County, particularly those that are in very stressful jobs with the county. So think about the sheriff deputies that work in the Justice Center. Think about the 911 call takers that are stressed every single day because everybody's stressed when they're calling 911. And then the other job where we were losing folks was child protective services. And these are individuals that go into people's homes to make sure kids are safe and often have to deal with a very difficult family situation. We were losing folks because we weren't paying competitive wages. And so we have corrected that problem. We did a large study to compare ourselves to neighboring counties and elsewhere, some of the big counties in the state. And so we are now paying people a decent wage. We've got a parental leave policy. And so we're trying to recruit and retain individuals. The reason I think it's so important to mention this is because these are your constituents. I mean, they're our constituents, but they're also your constituents and they count on us to deliver these services and do it well. And so I am very pleased to make that report. And then we've been very busy with other economic development projects, such as the convention center. We've got this Bengals lease that's coming up and the stadiums that I'd be happy to answer questions if you have any. But I did want to just, you know, again, give you the menu, offer some opportunities. You all, I think, also share with the fire hydrant maintenance. I think you do that through the county. We can also buy salt together. So we've got lots of opportunities. Do you buy salt with us too? Oh, all right. Well, there, see, I mean, you're rocking it out. So anyways, just wanted to provide that one last thing. So we are building, or rather renovating, a building in Springdale to house our EMA and 911 operations. Right now, EMA and 911 don't work in the same building. And the buildings they work in are really not great. They're rather dark, they're rather dingy, and especially for 911 operators, they sit like this close to each other when they're taking these calls. It's just not optimal. There's no place for them to kind of sit and regroup after a difficult call. And so we have, are renovating a building and it's purposely not in the core of the city of Cincinnati, but rather out further into the broader community. So we're doing it in Springdale. It's coming online at the end of next year, but it is good news, I think, for the constituents of this area that we will have that up, not here, but near, nearer, I should say. And these are really critical emergency management operations and 911 operations. So I don't want to take any more time. Again, sorry I'm late, but happy to answer any questions if you have them.
Commissioner Dreehouse, first of all, I want to thank you for being here. And I want to thank you for returning a call. I made eight phone calls at a moment of distress. I'm a chaplain also for the American Legion and they had a really hard time parking downtown and they couldn't get to the building for the appointments, doctor's appointments, et cetera. I made eight phone calls to different public elected officials. I did it twice. You answered at the first one. And I also reached out to our representatives here and in Washington, they're all also veterans. And some of the things have subsided a little bit and they're able to reach the building a little bit better because it was unconscionable that they had to walk with a breathing machine for two or three blocks to be able to get there after they parked. But thank you so much for answering my call back. And it was after hours. It means a lot to me that you did that and to them.
Thank you. I appreciate that. And on that note, the Veteran Services Commission, is that what you're referring to? Veterans. Okay. So we are moving that, we have purchased a property up in Bonds Hill. It's going to allow us to consolidate a lot of our operations. In the end, it's going to save the taxpayers money. So it is JFS, it's public health, we've got, the veteran services are in their environmental management. It's free parking. It's free parking. You never hear that.
I know.
And right now, where we are, we're Veteran Services Commission. That's where our offices are in that complex too. You can't park down there.
I know.
When the courts are open, forget about it.
I know.
And it's expensive. We've got 1,000 free parking spots up at that location. So the VSC is purposely going there because there are people with disabilities that can't navigate downtown.
Absolutely.
And so I appreciate that comment.
Absolutely. And I suggest that perhaps some rides pick up for them to be able to get them from home there, not having to go there and park, et cetera. Maybe some free rides on the metro and all that. And I mean, it was a situation in which many of them were not be able to keep the appointments that they had because they couldn't park.
Right.
So I really appreciate your involvement in it.
Thank you.
I really appreciate above all the fact that you took the time to call me after hours to tell me, I heard you.
Thank you. I appreciate that. And we do have free rides on Metro, by the way.
I have a question. You said that we have taken advantage of, did you say 103,000 or 105,000 in grant programs?
It's 103,995.24.
Do you know how that, thank you. Do you know how that compares to other villages that are around our size?
Well, you know what? It varies from place to place. And I will tell you, I've only got, after you all, I only have two more places to go. So I've been almost everywhere. And here's my cheat sheet. So I have found that some places are better equipped to take advantage of these grants because you've got the personnel or the capacity to do it. Others do not. So I think you're doing pretty well as a village. I'm not going to name the name of the village I was in last night, but they were nowhere near this number.
Oh, wow. That's good.
Yeah, yeah. And I always look up the population of the village or the town or, I'm going to Greentown Chip next week and that's way, way bigger than you guys. And they are pulling in more of these resources, as you would expect. But this other village is almost the exact same population as you all and you are probably, you're a good 60 grand higher than they are.
That's awesome. I know some of it depends on people actually applying to take advantage, but I was just curious because that's awesome.
And so, and let me just say though, the purpose of the visit is to make you aware of some of the things that you have not taken advantage of because you just don't know they exist, right? So if you go onto our website and go into economic development, you will see all these programs that I referenced. And so these grants are available now. They haven't been in the past. The one caveat I have to this is there weren't a budget cycle right now and Jeffaludar Administrator[1799.82] And Jeff, who's our administrator, has indicated to us that the revenue available and the request, the initial gap was fifty million dollars, which is a tremendously high number. Usually it's about twenty million. So we are closing the gap gradually. And he will offer us a structurally balanced budget. But my worry is that some of these grant programs might be reduced, and they're competitive. So my recommendation would be to, you know, pay attention to the deadlines because they're rolling, they're annual. But the deadline to apply varies from grant to grant. But get in there. And because what we will do is try to spread it around so that the same village or the same city doesn't get the grant over and over again. But others do, so.
I think it's important to note that Yvonne has done a great job. She's the lead person. And it really makes a difference when you have somebody that you can't win if you don't play.
That's right, a hundred percent. And others don't have the capacity to do that. So if you're the one, I applaud you. But we appreciate the partnership.
Thank you very much.
Okay? Thank you.
Thanks a lot.
All right. Okay. Moving on, reports of municipal officials. Yvonne Kobach.
Thank you, Mayor. Okay, we have some big items on the agenda tonight. And I think the first one is a very special one. Ordinance, by the way, is not a typo that it says 2023. We use the original date of when it first had its reading, which was last year. So this would be the second reading. And I think we've discussed this quite a bit in the last few meetings. Exhibits are the updated ones. If you remember, there were a few properties on Cromwell that we took out that were not original structures. And we made some deletions, like the ADA requirements out of guidelines and a few wording changes. But I think we're good to go. So that's all your agenda. Typical one, our tax advances for the counties on there for next year already. It's so hard to believe. We also have some supplementals. It's more like year-end kinds of things. I can go through those. Or Deb, would you like to run through those real quick?
I can't.
All right.
Can you move it to that now?
Sure, sure.
That's fine. So in completing the third quarter, I always try to go through each fund. And of course, they have individual line items if need be to see where we're at and look out to the last quarter. So I tried just to do one of these to kind of clean up and take us through December. So these are the items that need a little adjustment before year.
I had housekeeping.
That's right.
Okay, great. Next item is also a very special item. Chief and I have been working with superintendent from the school district on a partnership for student, school resource officers. And so we're moving forward with that. We'd like to establish two part-time positions that will go one at each of the schools and know that this is fully reimbursed by the school district. So Chief will probably say a little bit more during his report. But I just wanted to mention that we're pretty excited. We feel it's proactive stuff. And we're looking forward to getting that underway. Passage of this tonight, again, creates a position and will allow him to start looking for good candidates. Then we have one of our assessments. I believe the first one is for assessments on individual properties for some cleanup items. The second assessment is a different kind of assessment. And this is for fine on a certain property. In this case, I've assigned it to, I believe, Twenty Eswin, which is the shopping center. You know, we've encountered some issues in the past and continue to do so where people don't file paperwork, we don't know who's in the building. It creates some pretty bad situations for the community. So we built this into our code a number of years ago to have a way to get compliance. So the fine was to have been paid by the twentieth, which was two days ago. It was not so, this is to assess it to the property. Okay, now the other stuff. We've had some really interesting things happen. One of them, not such a good thing. I learned just about a week ago that we had an issue with our emails. It has to do with rack space, putting some kind of filter that we didn't know, a spam filter, and it triggered, but only in some accounts. Mine was horrible. I haven't gotten, I didn't even know, I wasn't getting them since February. It isn't all of them. This is the one that come through the website. So if somebody goes there and clicks on your email, and around this table, Rachel, you were impacted. Maria, you were. Jim, you were. Mary Ann was. Trying to think who else. Anyway, there were about seven of us that were impacted. It has been corrected now. So you're going to see in your email a big chunk of whatever. He was able to go back to June first. You'll see a chunk of your emails. There could be older ones. I know mine went back to February. And it was over two hundred. So that was pretty nauseating. But anyway, it has been fixed. So be looking. If you see those strange things, he was able to do them in groups. So as you download that, it's going to take a little bit of time. Also wanted to let you know on some of our projects, the work is going really well under the pool garage area. They've done the scraping, cleaning. They're working on the patching. The beams have been ordered and should hopefully go in place. Well, within November for sure, hopefully within just a couple of weeks. So that's moving on real well. You will start seeing on the Farragut Ingram project, you will start seeing some catch basin work. They won't do anything really substantial until into the winter. And paving won't actually happen until May, I believe they were targeting for it. So it'll be stretched out a little bit, but during the winter, it shouldn't be too bad on the streets for coverage. We do have the Harvest Fest coming up, which should be a ton of fun because we have a lot of fun items coming up on it. So look forward to being there. And that's what I have for now. Thank you.
I would like to give touch briefly on the changes that we had. We touched about the ADA.
Correct.
Could you also, just for the viewing audience, what is the changing of the wording that we did for strengthening a little bit that particular work? Those were the only two changes that I know about. And I think Councilman Halter brought that up to tighten a little bit more. And we did. And I would like to touch up on that.
Okay, there were just a couple of them. And one of them, I think, is in the first, which you knew I went and took the yellow highlighters out. But I'm sure it had to do with if final siding is used. Before it said, like, well, you have to use it. Or, yeah, it was very kind of hippie. So if final siding is used, it has to be eight inch. That was one. And do you happen to have which one? It was something on that same page. I don't recall, but it had to do with windows. I took the yellow highlighters out. So we have a clean copy.
The paint colors.
No vivid colors.
That's right, that's right. No vivid colors. Yes, that's right.
And I remember that I brought up the point that in case of the siding, just because inclement weather, a tree or whatever, you only have to replace what went down, not the whole part of that. Yeah, correct. Just wanted to make sure that everybody was aware of that.
Yeah. And then the ADA section was removed.
Correct. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Yvonne, did you receive anything from the Historical Society at all? I know you reached out to them. And I know, I think there was a little bit of a delay to get back to you.
Great. No, I haven't.
Okay. I did see one thing where they, their recommendation was to possibly have a definitions section.
Oh, we will for sure. In fact, I think that's one of the first things we'll probably start with is the definitions, images portraying what it is that we're looking for, things like that. Yeah.
And then I think another thing that we're more aware of than in the document was just a light explanation of the purpose behind them and what, you know, what that is. I don't know if that was included in the upfront part or not, but I'll have to go back and look.
The purpose of the guidelines?
Yes, just a general introduction, if you will.
Okay.
Versus, hey, here's these things you've got to abide by.
Right, right.
But, good.
Okay, yes, excellent, very exciting.
Okay. Moving on, Law Director Jeff Forbes.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of quick items. Just continue to report that we don't have any, the village is not involved in any pending legal action right now. So we'll see how long that, how long that goes. Again, at this point, there are really no new bills at the state level of municipal interest to report on. I would mention, and Yvonne mentioned this, you'll see some stuff on your agenda, and you may be seeing some more stuff in the future. We're continuing to work on how best to deal with a number of infractions and violations at the shopping center.
From a code standpoint?
Yes, from a code standpoint. And then the only other thing I would point out, I'm going to say this, and then I'm going to, at the end, I'm going to say, I actually have a meeting and can't do it. But the Ohio Municipal League did recently share some information that next, I think it's next week, on October twenty-ninth, there's a webinar that they're making available that has to do with the new Department of Justice accessibility standards for public entities. But it's not what you might be thinking. It actually has to do with websites. So if a public entity has its own website, you have to make sure that that website complies with ADA requirements. So there's going to be a webinar next week. It's free, from what I can tell. So I was registered for it, but then a different meeting came up. So I may try to have someone else in my office watch it. But I'm just making notes. So for those municipalities that do have a website, there are certain things you have to do to comply with these. They're brand-new Department of Justice regulations that may.
Is that a link you could share?
Probably. No, I'm trying to think. I got it, I don't know how many other people get this. I got it in like the weekly update from the Ohio Municipal League.
I did, yeah.
So there was a, there's a link there to register. It's actually, my recollection is that it's a joint presentation from the Ohio Municipal League and Ohio Township Association. Just a webinar to let you know what you may need to do with your website. And that's all I have to report tonight. You can answer any questions.
Yes, Mr. Forbes. A long time ago, I brought up the point. I was waiting to interpret in the court of reading. And there was a part of the procedures that did not belong to me, but I was sitting there waiting. And there was some kind of penalties involved, violations on properties, et cetera. And I brought it to you, the fact that they actually was adjudicated the fact that if they were not going to be doing the work that was required to do on those properties, they were going to be assessing per diem the fines. And you said at the time that that was not something common to be done or not permissible and things like that. But if that person was not going to come up through with, it was very kind of argumentative. He said, I'm going to pay whatever the fine is right now, assess the fine, and I'll pay it. And he says, no, we are not going to finalize this until you get the job done. And we will assess a fine every day until you do. And you brought up the fact that that was not possible. I wonder if anything was changed since then, something that we could do about the shopping center in that situation or something like that? Do you recall me asking you those questions? No.
I don't recall that specific conversation. I do know in general what you're talking about. And it is very common that sometimes penalty provisions will say that whatever the penalty is, it is for each day that there is a violation. And what we may have discussed back then was that that can be done. The issue with really being able to do that is you have to go through the entire enforced, you have to go through the entire notice and everything every single time you want to enforce a violation. So it can be done. With respect to the shopping center, I can tell you, we actually met just prior to this meeting. And we have some other avenues of things that we're exploring to, to try to get some.
Because I remember what was going on. And actually, the fine was two hundred and fifty dollars per diem until it was deemed past the requirements. But I mean, I can tell you this much. It was more than nine years ago because my husband was alive. So I just brought that up, hearing the situation here being talked about with the shopping center.
Yeah, I can tell you that we are exploring every avenue that we can to bring various violations into compliance.
Well, you know me by now, so I'm just always going to the last two cents worth that I can probably, can just, you know, collaborate with you or give you an ideas or something like that. It's really a situation that we have been fighting for a while.
Yes, we are aware.
Thank you.
Okay. Clerk of Council, Teresa Lawley.
Nothing tonight.
Okay, Chief Police Jim Howard.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a few things, a couple of things already been touched on. First and foremost, I'd like to congratulate Sergeant Patton, Tony Patton. Thirty-six years as of October eleventh of this month. So we appreciate everything he's done for the community.
Absolutely.
Remnants of Helene that came through. I appreciate everybody's patience. I thought we were going to get inundated a lot more than we did with the power outages and everything else. But everybody showed a lot of patience. We appreciated it. I know we appreciated the fire department and public service clearing the roadways and getting trees off of the roadways and so forth, keep everything passable. So we truly appreciate that. The legislation, the resolution you have is, the manager mentioned earlier, that is to get two part-time police officer positions. We had those, from what I understand, in the past, but it was combined to one full-time. So we no longer had the two part-time. In order to do this resolution, that will give us the opportunity to post through Wynton Woods, for Wynton Woods, two part-time school resource officers. One will be appointed to the alternative school and one will be appointed to the South Campus. I do want to say this has been in long discussions, a lot of work and meetings, with Superintendent Denny, since he took on as superintendent and the manager, Yvonne. It's not going to happen overnight. This is no different than if I go out and hire a full-time police officer or a part-time police officer. So we have a long process to do. I just want everybody to know that it's forthcoming. And we look forward to it and working with Wynton Woods. I think it's a great thing. And it's a great thing for both. We talked about a lot of different plans and what it looked like, but the best bang for their buck is having these two part-time positions, therefore covering both schools. Instead of just having one that's going to be a full-time employee, kind of bouncing back and forth. So we look forward to that. A lot more to come if that's passed this evening. Like you mentioned, Harvest Fest, we'll have our equipment there from 2:00 PM to 5:00 PM. Look forward to kids coming out, anybody's come out. We have the Bearcat from the SWAT team be there also. Chief mentioned, Julie Sheets and I went and did the Green Hills Cooperative Preschool Bike-A-Thon this past week. That was a great time. Bicycle safety rules with all the little kids. And I actually read a book, Stranger Danger, to them. So that was a great time also. You might have noticed a new look on two of our five police cars out there. That's our new look that we're actually going to be going to. We do have in the works of purchasing three part, three part-time. Three used police cars, they're 2020s from another jurisdiction. Those three police cars, although they are used or 2020s, have been very well maintained. They're in good shape. And we're actually able to purchase those three used police cars cheaper than we can outfit one brand-new one and equipped. So we're getting a good bang for a buck as far as that goes. And with that, those three cruisers, when they come in, are going to get that new look. So instead of waiting, I went ahead and the two that we're keeping had them taken off. So we all, all five of them look the same instead of three with the new look and two with the old look. So that's what that's about. Same officers, same cruisers, just a different look on it. just a different look on it right now. Trick or treat, don't forget, October 31st, just encourage everybody to teach your kids to make sure they're well-let, look both ways, cross the street, cross with them, et cetera, we want everybody to go home safe. And as we mentioned also earlier, Election Day, November 5th, exercise your right to vote at the polls. And a couple September crime statistics, we responded to almost 200 incidences past month, 196 to be exact, we had seven physical arrests, two of those were a result of domestic violence, one was an assault. Took a total of 14 criminal offense reports, we responded with the fire department on 24 squad runs, 24 parking complaints, we provided each way to other jurisdictions surrounding us 14 times. We issued 36 traffic citations, we issued 42 traffic warnings, and we investigated five auto accident reports during the month of September. And I know I might have something else, but for now, that's all I have. Unless you have any questions.
Chief, with our new cruisers, former cruisers from somebody else, is the equipment inside up to par to what we need?
Yeah, yeah, I'm confident with the equipment. I mean, naturally, we can always have, you know, more, better, expensive equipment and so forth, but I feel we're adequate with what we have.
Okay.
If money was no object, then I'm sure I could, sure I could spend it.
Yeah, money is an object, yeah.
Very done that we can, and we're just grateful to be able to get these three, three cars, because those three cars that we will be getting rid of, or we're hoping to hold on to actually two of them, because I know with the discussions with Wynton Woods, they want a cruiser in front of the building, and I can't promise that.
Yeah.
If I just have our five cars. So this is a good opportunity for them, and actually, they would fund with the redecal and the rebranding of the, of the two cars that we were going to get rid of. That way, they would be guaranteed to have a car parked in front of us, as a deterrent, and then we would have one left that we would actually get rid of, if that makes sense. Thought timing, and works out pretty good, actually.
Any other questions? Mayor's, Mayor's report, court receipts, the bank balance for the month of September is $26,480.49. Checks to be issued, the state of Ohio, $757.50. Hamilton County, $28.50. And the Village of Green Hills, $2,999, $99.90. That's all I have. Okay. Reports to committee, Community Development, Jim Bonner.
Thank you, Mayor. About a month ago, there was an announcement made that we would have Fall Beautification Awards to be announced tonight, and I am happy to report that there are a lot of beautiful fall decorated yards in the village, and we have two awards to make on the east side, and two awards on the west side of Wynton Road. And there's just a great use of fall flowers, mums, and Halloween decorations, and as usual, as, as we experienced with the spring awards, it was hard to come to a decision, because there were a lot of good awards, or a lot of good decorations out there, in bulk-kept yards. So on the, on the east side, we have 14 Gambier, 141 Julip, and on the west side, we have 58 Damon, and 21 Bexford. So those are our four Fall Beautification Award winners for 2024. Thank you very much for all the work the residents have done to make their yards beautiful. That's all I've got.
And we may end up, in addition, doing Christmas judging. If people keep decorating for Halloween like they're doing, have to create something for that. I'm surprised how many places are celebrating Halloween now. Okay, Services of Streets, Melanie Hermes.
I had no report at this time, just the renewal levy is on the ballot, so please remember to vote. It's been in effect since 1979, and it's not an additional date.
Thank you. Finance and Audit, Jack Lee.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Council, at your place tonight is the General Fund recap for the month of September. You can peruse that, but the, I went back and, and looked at, at the prior months, going back to the end of the school year, and as you can see, there, there is, there have been a, a general, small reduction each, each month, and which is reflective of fewer employees within, within the village. But overall, for the, for the year, income tax revenue has, has stayed positive, and with, with good results. Real estate funds are coming in on, on time, which is a, a good, good surprise. The general fund balance is, at the end of September, overall, is $2,907,810.96, which is an improvement over September a year ago. Expenses are still being watched like a hawk, and, and we're spending is below appropriations for what should be at this point, which, which is, which is a positive. We will have some additional transfers noted to come forward in a resolution later on. Unless you have any questions, that's the end of my report.
Thanks. Thank you. Okay, Recreation Cable Television, Rachel Hudson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The only thing that I have to report is the Waycross Community Media Update, and that is that their election forums are airing now. That includes the programs on the ballot for the Village of Green Hills, the two issues. These programs are available to be viewed on YouTube. And that's it. Thank you.
All righty, thanks. Safety, Jeff Halter.
Yes, I would like to encourage everybody to vote yes on issue 16, to support our fire department. Rich history there, and for us to be competitive in a very difficult supply and demand scenario, it's important to give your support to our fire department. We will be putting door hangers out that summarize the benefits and, you know, what's on the issue. I might be tapping, I don't know if we've got to talk about this, anybody that's willing to take some of the door hangers around and put them up. That concludes my report.
Okay, General Government Affairs, Laws and Rules, Maria Walther.
I'm hoping to have a meeting with the support and availability of Mr. Lee. Could we do that on the 19th of November? It's a Tuesday, that there is no council meeting, and I can be available after 2:00, if that's agreeable with everybody. Is that okay?
Yeah.
All right, moving on. This is the time for citizens to comment on legislation listed on the agenda for this session of council. When recognized, please come forward to the podium, complete the sign-in sheets, verbally indicate if you're a resident of Green Hills or a non-resident. Non-residents required to get permission ahead of time, and I don't see any here. Then state your comments, comments will be limited to four, four minutes. All right. Unfinished business, ordinance number 2023-02-CD, CD, second reading, establishing a local historic district in the Village of Green Hills. Mr. Bonner.
Ordinance number 2023-02-CD, establishing a local historic district in the Village of Green Hills. Whereas pursuant to ordinance number 2013-04-CD, passed on 4/2/2013, village council created an historic overlay district as part of the zoning code in the Green Hills codified ordinances. And whereas the purpose of the overlay district is to preserve and protect historic properties in the Village of Green Hills, and any subsequently designated local historic landmarks, historic districts, contributed buildings, and historic sites. Whereas the historic overlay district establishes procedures to maintain the historic character of select local historic districts within the village, and whereas the village of, whereas the council of the Village of Green Hills desires to designate a local historic district pursuant to the requirements of Green Hills codified ordinances, Chapter 1143, now therefore be it ordained by the Council of the Village of Green Hills, Ohio, members elected thereto, concurring Section 1, that the area identified in the map attached as Exhibit A, and further defined by the addresses listed in Exhibit B, shall be designated as a local historic district in the Village of Green Hills. And Section 3, that this ordinance shall make, shall, should be a, Section 2?
Should be 2, 2.
So Section 2, that this ordinance shall take effect and be in force from and after the earliest period allowed by law. Mr. Mayor, I recommend the adoption of this ordinance.
Second, is it Rachel?
Second.
Second?
Yep.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, any comments or questions?
It's been around a while.
Yeah, there are none. Clerk, poll the council.
Ms. Walther?
Aye.
Mr. Halter?
Aye.
Mr. Lee?
Aye.
Mr. Bonner?
Aye.
Ms. Hermes?
I abstain.
Ms. Hudson?
Aye.
Okay, ordinance number 2023-02-CD passes. Okay, next, new business, Resolution Number 2024-R25-F, requesting county auditor make tax events advances during the year 2025 pursuant to the Ohio Revised Code, Section 321.34. Mr. Lee?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Resolution 2024-R25-F, Resolution requesting the county auditor to make tax advances during the year 2025 pursuant to Ohio Revised Code, Section 321. 34. Whereas Ohio Revised Code allows a taxing authority to request advance payment from the county auditor, funds derived from taxes and other sources to the county treasurer, which may be held on account of a, of a location subdivision, now therefore be resolved by the Council of the Village Green Hills, Ohio. Section 1, the auditor and the treasurer of Hamilton County, in accordance with Ohio Revised Code 321.34, be required to draw and pay to the Village of Green Hills upon written request of the finance director, Deborah Heimer, to the county auditor. Funds due to any settlement of 2025 derived from taxes and other sources payable to the county treasurer to the account of the Village of Green Hills, and lawfully applicable for purposes of the, of the current fiscal year. Section 2, clerk of council of the Village of Green Hills be and hereby is directed to transmit a certified copy of this resolution to the auditor of Hamilton County, Ohio. Section 3, this resolution shall take effect and be in full force from and after the earliest date allowed by law. Mr. Mayor, I move for the adoption of this resolution.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any comments or questions?
This, this is something we do every year, and it's to get our money faster, so.
Yeah, if we want our money, we need to do it. Okay, Clerk, poll the council.
Mr. Halter?
Aye.
Ms. Walther?
Aye.
Mr. Bonner?
Aye.
Ms. Hudson?
Aye.
Mr. Lee?
Aye.
Ms. Hermes?
Aye.
Okay, Resolution Number 2024-R25-F passes. Next Resolution, 2024-R26-F, Resolution Making Supplemental Appropriations and Transfers. Mr. Lee?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Resolution 2024-R26-F, Resolution Making Supplemental Appropriations and Transfers. Whereas the 2024 annual appropriations were adopted on December 12th, 2023, are to be amended. And whereas the appropriations must not exceed the total available resources of the village, per Ohio Revised Code 5705.36A5, therefore, an amended certificate of estimated resources has been requested from the County Budget Commission. Now therefore be it resolved by the Council of the Village Green Hills, Ohio. Section 1, since certain actions are needed in monies appropriated so to permit the Village of Green Hills to meet its fiscal obligations for the year 2024, the following items of expenditures are to supplement the appropriations for expenditure for the year 2024. Fund description, general fund, account number 1,000.130, electricity, initial appropriation, $38,000, change, an additional $8,000, for a new total of $46,000. General fund, account number 1,000.710, administration, original appropriation, $333,660, change is an additional $24,340, for a new total of $3,358,000. General fund, account 1,000.725, finance, original appropriation was $170,000, change is an additional $20,000, for a new total of $190,000. General fund, 1,000.750, law director, original appropriation, $37,985, additional change is $6,015, for a new total of $44,000. Fund description, fire contract, account number 2902, original appropriation was $126,700, change is an additional $8,930, for a new total of $135,000. Section 2, that the following transfers of funds be made from previously appropriated monies, none. Section 3, that this resolution shall take effect and be in full force from and after the earliest date allowed by law. Mr. Mayor, I move for the adoption of this resolution.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any comments or questions?
As was noted earlier, that these are just kind, this is a housekeeping move, basically, to round off those accounts, so that they have, have appropriate balances at the end of the year, so.
Jack, could you, just, since we have the levy coming up, put a little context around the fire contract, and what that means?
Sure, sure. The additional money there is, is that the, the agreed, agreed amount of the fire contract that we currently have in place is, is an amount of $135,000, which has been the amount.
That's been.
Previously. So we're just fulfilling that, that contract amount.
The real estate tax settlement only gave us approximately $126,000, so we were shod by the contractual amount that was decided upon later. The budget was already set, so that fills all the difference.
Thank you.
Clerk, poll the council.
Ms. Hudson?
Aye.
Mr. Bonner?
Aye.
Ms. Walther?
Aye.
Ms. Hermes?
Aye.
Mr. Halter?
Aye.
Mr. Lee?
Aye.
Okay, Resolution Number 2024-R26-F passes. Next Resolution, Number 2024-R27-S, establishing two part-time police officer positions within the Green Hills Police Department to serve as school resource officers. Mr. Halter.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have Resolution Number 2024-R27-S, Resolution establishing two part-time police officer, officer positions within, within the Green positions within the Green Hills Police Department to serve as school resource officers. Whereas the council of the village of Green Hills and the board of Wintonwood School District desire to enter into a partnership to foster and support both educational and law enforcement goals. And whereas the council of the village of Green Hills and the board of Wintonwood School District have agreed that the hiring and placement of part-time police officer within the District 2 schools located in Green Hills will provide the support necessary to further said goals. Now therefore be it resolved by the council of the village of Green Hills, Ohio. Section 1, the village council does hereby create two part-time police officer positions within the Green Hills Police Department. Section 2, that the new part-time officer shall serve as school resource officers at the South Campus and at the Alternative School. Section 3, that the full cost of hiring said officers will be paid by the Wintonwood School District. Section 4, that this resolution shall be in full force and take effect from and after its passage. Mr. Mayor, I move for this, the adoption of this resolution.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any comments or questions?
I'm just grateful to Yvonne and she for working with the superintendent and for initiative being taken, just to protect the kids. It's really exciting, and I love being able to brag on the village of Green Hills and our school district because I love it. So, thank you, guys.
Thank you. All right. Clerk poll the council.
Ms. Hermes.
Aye.
Mr. Lee.
Aye.
Ms. Water.
Aye.
Mr. Holter.
Aye.
Ms. Hudson.
Aye.
Mr. Boarder.
Aye.
Okay, resolution number 2024-R27-S passes. Next resolution, number 2024-R-SNS, authorizing assessments on certain properties in the village of Green Hills. Ms. Hermes.
Resolution number 2024-R28-SNS, resolution authorizing assessments on certain properties in the village of Green Hills. Whereas the village has given proper notice to the owners of certain real properties in the village of Green Hills regarding the removal of vegetation, refuse, garbage, and/or debris from the properties listed below. And whereas the owners of said properties did not take action to remedy the violations, and therefore the village of Green Hills contracted to remove vegetation, refuse, garbage, and/or debris, and now seeks to collect said expenses by authorizing the placement of a lien upon the lands and collect it as other taxes. Now therefore be it resolved by the council of the village of Green Hills, Ohio. Section 1, that the village council hereby certifies that the costs of such labor, together with the expenses relative thereto, be filed on the return and statement to the Hamilton County Commissioners as an assessment against the properties listed and placed as a lien against the properties by the auditor of Hamilton County, Ohio, as follows. Parcel number 597-0070, 0153-00, address 18 Avenue Lane. Owner Fallon Wagner. Cost $137.65. Parcel number 597-0010, 015000, address 93 Ireland Avenue. Owner Andrea Pacheco Lopez. Cost $458.3 for a total of $595.68. Section 2, all amounts collected as a result of this resolution shall be placed into the general fund of the village of Green Hills. Section 3, this resolution be effective immediately upon its passage. Mermoor, I move for the adoption of this resolution.
I second it. It's been moved and seconded. Any comments or questions? Clerk poll the council.
Mr. Lee.
Aye.
Mr. Boarder.
Aye.
Ms. Water.
Aye.
Ms. Hudson.
Aye.
Ms. Hermes.
Aye.
Mr. Holter.
Aye.
Resolution number 2024-R28-SNS passes. Okay, last resolution is resolution number 2024-R29-CD, resolution authorizing the assessment of a fine on certain properties in the village of Green Hills. Mr. Boarder.
Resolution number 2024-R29-CD, resolution authorizing the assessment of a fine on certain property in the village of Green Hills. Whereas the village has provided notice to the owner-manager of the Green Hills Shopping Center informing them of their responsibility pursuant to Green Hills Code, Section 705.99B, to not allow any entity or person to take possession of any rented leased, bartered, borrowed, or otherwise conveyed space without receiving a certified copy of a business license, or they will be fined $250 for the first offense and $500 for each offense thereafter. And whereas if the fine is not paid in full within 10 days of written notice, in this case by October 20, 2024, it will be filed with the Hamilton County Auditor for placement of a lien on the offending property. Now therefore be it resolved by the council of the village of Green Hills, Ohio. Section 1, that the village council hereby directs the auditor of Hamilton County, Ohio, as follows. Parcel number 597-0030, 008900, address 20 S1 Street. The owner Village Gate LLC had a cost of $5,250. Section 2, the amount collected as a result of this resolution shall be placed into the general fund of the village of Green Hills. In section 3, this resolution shall be effective immediately upon its passage. Mr. Mayor, I move for the adoption of this resolution.
Rachel. Second.
Second, sorry.
It's been moved and seconded. Any comments or questions?
That's 11 offenses, correct?
Yes.
That was my napkin, ma.
Okay. Clerk poll the council.
Ms. Hermes.
Aye.
Mr. Lee.
Aye.
Ms. Water.
Aye.
Ms. Hudson.
Aye.
Mr. Holter.
Aye.
Mr. Boarder.
Aye.
Okay, resolution number 2024-R29-CD passes. Any council members have any comments they want to make before we hit the calendar?
Can I make a comment on that last item?
Yeah.
That Ms. Hermes just brought up, 11 cases. I just want you to know that in addition to the property owner being fined for this, each of those 11 were also fined $100. And if they don't pay it within their timeframe, they'll be cited to court.
And then do they have to provide, if they pay that and then submit a license, they're in good standing, correct?
Yeah, there's some other paperwork most of them have to do.
Okay.
But, yeah, they better submit next year, or the same thing will happen.
Okay.
And it only costs $10 to do that. Okay. Municipal calendar. We've got Halloween, the 31st.
Harvest, the 26th, the Saturday.
And that time is?
12 to 8.
12 to 8, okay.
With the contest at 2, right?
Registration, and then I think which one, the pie?
Yeah, well, you might as well say all of them. You know more than me.
Yeah, 2, I think it's 2 for the 2:30 carving.
Okay.
And then you can carve between 2:30 and 4:30. And then, I think it's 2:30 registration for the pie eating with eating starting at 3.
Okay.
And I believe it's going to be in it.
Yeah.
All right.
And there'll be dog adoption, too, so.
Yes.
Yeah.
It's very exciting. We have a lot of really neat stuff that we've never had before.
What time am I supposed to be judging?
12.
12, okay.
I just wanted to get a little position here on the meetings in November. We have it the 12th and the 26th of November for the council meetings, work session, the 12th, and the regular meeting on the 26th. Right before Thanksgiving.
Sounds right. That makes sense to everybody? Of course.
Okay, and in December, on the 10th, the second one is the 24th of December. That has been replaced for the 10th.
Right.
Okay.
That'll be our only meeting.
All right.
And laws and rules on November 19.
Then I did.
Sometime after 2:00.
Do we have, do we have a finance?
Now that we have a date, we will set a finance committee within two weeks prior to the December 10 council meeting, and we'll review the 2025 proposed budget. So we'll set a date.
Okay.
We'll be able to set a date now, but we have the council meeting.
Don't forget that November 2 is your clock's fallback. And also change your smoke detector batteries.
Okay, and allegiance having veteran today.
1111 or 1111. And they are military punctual.
Right, and down on the commons.
Yes.
At the shadow pole. All right, that's it. Unless anybody's got anything else?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to move to go into executive session.
Were you having public speaking?
Oh, wait a minute. Yes. Sorry. Hold on. This is an opportunity for residents, citizens, to comment on matters before council. When recognized, please come forward to the podiums, complete the sign-in sheet, verbally indicate if you're a resident of Green Hills, and state your comments. If you have questions, a question to be recorded and referred to the manager's office for responses will allow time for thoughtful and thorough consideration to be given to each question. Council meetings are recorded for ease of transcription. Comments are limited to four minutes. Speakers may not use any or all of their time to other speakers. Okay. Sorry.
Monique Mason-Halter, Green Hills resident. Over the past several months, I have spoken at meetings about dozens of federal bills that eliminate municipal authority over the installation of cell towers and other wireless facilities. I've also provided you with information by email and in print. Last month, I sent Yvonne, Brenda, and Teresa a link to forward to you for an online action alert created by Environmental Health Trust. It made several requests of Congress, including that it support HR 8082, which would return control over wireless deployment to municipalities. I had also provided you with information about HR 8082 before, and also asked you to contact our congressman, Warren Davidson, about it also. Additionally, over many years, all the information that I've provided to you has shown that there are many safety risks to consider when installing wireless facilities. Of course, it can reduce property value as well. Tonight, I've provided you with a document printed from the Environmental Health Trust website titled, "5G Small Cells and Cell Towers Can Drop Property Values: Would You Buy a Home with Cell Antennas Outside the Bedroom Window?" I'm going to read excerpts from it now. Legal filings by cities and municipalities to the FCC highlight how small cell deployment could impact aesthetics and property values. From a comment posted to the FCC, docket number 16-421, on April 7, 2017, by the Smart Communities Citing Coalition, which represents local governments and associations in 1,854 U.S. communities, quote, "Many deployments of small cells could affect property values with significant potential effect," end quote. And then, these are quotes from an article in Realtor Magazine, which are on the document, quote, "An overwhelming 94% of home buyers and renters surveyed by the National Institute for Science, Law, and Public Policy say they are less interested and would pay less for a property located near a cell tower or antenna." And, quote, "Of the 1,000 surveyed respondents, 79% that under no circumstances would they ever purchase or rent a property within a few blocks of a cell tower or antennas." And almost 90% said they were concerned about the increasing number of cell towers and antennas in their residential neighborhood," end quote. So, before my four minutes are up, I'd like to thank council members again for writing a letter to the FCC, Federal Communications Commission, and asking that the agency comply with the 2021 court order to specifically address scientific evidence related to the health and environmental impacts of RF wireless radiation, including 5G, and also expressing your desire to keep home rule regarding the installation of cell towers. I also appreciate that in 2022, the majority of council members voted to pass a protective small cell towers ordinance to regulate deployment in the village. Since then, other residents and I have asked you to strengthen it so it's as protective as ordinances passed by other municipalities, such as Amberly Village and Marymont. I am asking also again for that tonight, and also again for you to contact our federal lawmakers to ask them to take action to protect us from some of these federally, federal legislation that's going to eliminate municipal control over this deployment. Thank you.
Okay, Jack.
All right. Once again, I move to go into executive session, consider the promotion or compensation of Republican voting.
Second.
Clerk poll the council.
Mr. Boarder.
Aye.
Ms. Hudson.
Aye.
Mr. Holter.
Aye.
Ms. Hermes.
Aye.
Mr. Lee.
Aye.
Ms. Water.
Aye.
Go into executive session, take a short break to get the microphones gathered up, and then back together here.